Bring this meeting to order. Board of Commissioners work, budget work session for May 7, 2025. First, we will need the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion is there, second. All in favor. Motion passed. New business presentations.
And commissioners, good afternoon. So today we're going to hear from four departments, starting with the planning department, and then Parks and Recreation, and our chiefs, police, and then we wrap it up with fire. And like we did on Monday, each department will present their operating capital budget requests in one, unlike how we've done it in times past again because we have a compressed schedule, but that is if there are capital requests. What you're going to hear today is more like a priority budget, so to speak. There's no heart-shattering request or anything like that, but we also understand the reality of growth that we have to deal with. And so in some instances, you're going to hear my colleagues asking for one or two more positions or keeping their existing positions but filling vacancies so they can expand capacity to serve the public. And then we definitely appreciate you listening like you did last time, but not to stop you from asking clarifying questions. As a matter of fact, there will be a point where you will ask question, especially with our police presentation, there may be questions when Captain Colette is, or interim deputy chief is presenting. So here's the schedule going forward. I shared that with you during the week, but I want to emphasize for the listening audience that the schedule is also on our website so that they know when to tune in. Next week, so today you're covering these four departments. On Monday, you covered three. On May 14, there will be three departments, finance, administration, and that's where we talk about governing and communications, and then we're also going to have human resources who present respective requests. On May 14, we're going to provide you with a binder that will actually have all of the requests in one place. That day also, we're going to have an open house. Remember, we received hundreds of responses online, but even though we closed that on May 4th, we still want to give people an opportunity to come in on May 14 for an open house if there are questions. Then on May 20, I will present a draft combined budget to you to review and to consider as our FY 2526 budget. As I mentioned on Monday, please feel free to reach out to our department directors to ask specific questions. On Monday, we presented to you the findings from compensation study by David Hill. What I believe we will do is to look at our budget with all those three scenarios and present them to you on May 20. So that way you kind of get to compare the impact of each one of those scenarios on the overall budget. So that way we're not picking winners and losers, we're just kind of presenting, you know, scenarios to you. So please feel free to reach out to our directors either in advance of their presentations or after their presentations. On the 2nd of June, we're going to have a public hearing about specifically about the budget, and then on June 7, Saturday, we're going to have a budget retreat. So that's all I have, and so without further ado, I'm going to invite my planning director, Mr. Matlawa, to present his budget to you, followed by Ms. Sheila Long of Parks and Rec Director, and then Chief Grossman will follow, and then we'll close presentations by Chief Perry. Thank you.
Evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So the big theme of the planning department's budget for next year is prepare. It's not a secret that Zebulon is growing. Y'all have seen this slide before, although we have adjusted some of the numbers in relation to the approval of Zebulon mixed-use project last night. If no developer submitted a new project in the town of Zebulon, what we have in our entitlement process now, plus in terms of lots that we have already entitled, the town will grow by 6,600 people, more or less so. So even if nothing else happens and the economy stops, we still have to plan for 6,600 more people. And we know that that's simply not true. That's not going to happen. We're going to continue to see interest from investors in Wake County and beyond. And so the theme of this budget is to prepare the planning department for these next steps and for this new, bigger types of investment that the community is going to see in the coming years. This includes planning across our entire future growth area, not just being urban planners, but being community planners, thinking about creating a community of choice for all types of density. If you want to live a particular way, you should be able to do so in Zebulon, be it urban or be it rural. And prepare for a comprehensive plan update. This is something that I believe every commissioner has talked to me about at least once, and I believe that every five years or so, we should revisit the comprehensive plan. I don't think that this is the budget year to do that, but there are some things that we can do to be prepared so that comprehensive plan update, when it happens, perhaps in the next fiscal year beyond this one, that that update is as meaningful as possible for the residents and delivers the best possible outcomes that we can deliver. So in summary, fiscal year 26 budget for the planning department starts with maintaining what is working. I asked to support staffing at our current levels. That includes five planners, a planning technician, and two code enforcement officers. So this includes maintaining the tools that we use to help the community plan. That includes our online permitting software and our GIS accounts. And then also formally bring the transportation engineer account, which we've been managing, but it actually sits under the public works budget, under the planning budget. The second piece is that, you know, I would like to streamline and be very targeted in terms of our programmatic spending, focusing on how can our programmatic spending maximize public benefit? This includes procuring an on-call planning firm to assist with some of the specialty things that we may not need to bring or hire a full staff member in, but we certainly need access to these specialty disciplines. And also, there's been some adjustments to our materials and supplies just to reflect real usage and conduct a value per acre study to better understand the property tax situation in town, and that will help underwrite the comprehensive plan. We can talk about that in a second here. The third piece is promoting employee retention. We have been operating with a leaner staff than we are, are a lot, we have a planning tech position, and we have a senior planner position that haven't been staffed for most of this fiscal year. And I have an amazing staff, and so I want to ensure that we can continue to make Zebulon an employer of choice and give that staff and our new staff that we're hopefully be bringing in, you know, in the next couple of months, an opportunity to grow within this organization. Good planners are hard to find. It's very competitive. I think Zebulon is in many ways a premier employer from a planning perspective because our younger planners work on things that they would not work on in other communities. And so I want to be able to continue to provide that opportunity to young professionals and to make Zebulon an employer of choice. So what are the major changes between this year and last year? Well, there's three main items where there are significant increases. One is salary, and that's just a reflection of raises and just the current fabric of our, what our staff makes. The second is professional services, and that's a large jump, but a chunk of that is actually just moving a contract from public works into planning. And the third is travel and training, and that goes back into supporting our staff. So how are we going to pay for this increase? Well, I have, and this number's probably a little higher now because I calculated this about a month ago, but this is $100,000 in lapse salary because we've been operating with leaner staff. And I uploaded the wrong slide, but we have an increase in permit fees, about $5,000 a month from this year compared to last year, and we can only expect that number to grow. So it could be somewhere between 60 to $120,000 more in permit fees next year than we've received this year, assuming development trends remain the same, yet alone if they grow. And so it's approximately $300,000 more than the budget in this current fiscal year. So I'd like to just talk briefly now about some of the particular pieces within those increases. We'll start with talent. Planners, there's an American Institute of Certified Planners. It's effectively like a PE or the bar maybe for planners. And so it's an important membership to maintain, and it's expensive. And so I have an AICP. I have a staff member that's going to take the test this year, and we should operate on the assumption that the senior planner has one or will gain one while they are employed with us. And so supporting that membership is very, very important. The second piece is career ladder. I put in the budget the ability for staff to go and get certain certifications that we may want to bring in-house, certified floodplain manager, for example, continued certified zoning officers, and there's some other specialty certifications that where it makes sense and where it's feasible and we can in-source that, I would like to do that. And it's a great way also to support staff growth. And the third thing is conferences. Now, I'm not a conference guy, but I think they have value, particularly, or obviously the North Carolina American Planning Association and the CZO for sharing information and building relationships with industry professionals. But I've also put in the budget some additional room to go to specific conferences where there are either investors that are interested in bringing money into Zebulon or to real subject matter events that help provide more knowledge where we can maximize the public benefit. That could be housing, that could be environmental sciences or environmental services. So I want, you know, my ask and my proposal is to ensure that we have some room in there to be agile and flexible and be able to meet people where they're at in terms of our investors and in terms of what our community may want to see in terms of new knowledge brought into the community. The second piece is the strategic deployment of professional services. Moving the transportation engineer contract from public works into planning means less paperwork, and it also just sort of aligns what we're doing with reality, which is the transportation engineer works very closely with myself, works very closely with Kate, who chairs our TRC committee right now on, you know, effectively ensuring that the TIA's that developers submit are good and they're vetted. And that transportation engineer has also provided, you know, great advisory service to us regarding impact fees and regarding thinking about how all these TIA's fit together, particularly when you think about high-traffic areas like North Arundel. The second piece would be procuring an on-call planning firm to bring in certain specialties that we may not need full staff for, but I think it would provide a public benefit to ensure that we have access to that. This, this can be both specialties like environmental planning, for example, but it also could help supplement our staff on zoning reviews if we begin to receive more reviews than our staff can handle, and preparing text amendments. I think that'll be very important in the next couple of years moving forward as the UDO, in my opinion, should be reactive to market changes. And this can also help us prefer a comprehensive plan update. The third piece is the prepare for the comprehensive plan update through a value-per-acre analysis. This is an example of what the study, a graphic example of what the study shows. This is really for the first step in understanding where in town produces the highest value in terms of property tax per acre, and it allows us to then think about our planning tools in terms of a future land use map, our transportation policy in real terms and dollar terms. And so it adds a quantitative component to urban planning in Zebulon, and it will allow for the commission to guide investment in a more strategic way because you have better tools for that. And so that's the planning department budget. Happy to answer your questions, and I really appreciate your time today.
Questions, comments from the board? Commissioner Baxter.
I'm glad to see that you have training and conferences in here. I think that's going to be really, really useful to growing your team, so thanks for thinking about, about that. Because just like when we go on conferences, you know, we learn so much. I have a feeling that it's all the same, and you guys are going to be able to pick up some great information. Now, will you be looking into utilizing that program through NLC, any for training that through the local infrastructure hub?
We can't. Yeah, I'm familiar with the local infrastructure hub. There's actually a local infrastructure hub and there's a global infrastructure hub, so I at least get the newsletter from both. Those, you know, I have an affiliation with the Lincoln Institute of Land Policy, which has an education component to what they do, which I feel that some of my staff might benefit from access to as well. You know, and part of this is, one of the reasons why I didn't talk about a specific conference, other than the standard industry ones in the state, is because I think we should be agile and flexible to what the community needs. Either asks through their representatives or through things that we identify as staff through working with the community, so.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the board? Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Next presentation will be by Ms. Sheila Long, and she's going to present, and here again is to think about priorities in budgeting, needs versus wants. And so when I was working with Sheila on this particular presentation, one of the things that I mentioned is we've got to look at, in the future, how we address events. We can't do everything because there's a lot of strain, not just on staff capacity, but also on financial resources. And so you're going to hear today that she's kind of looking at creative ways of using existing positions to be able to address some of the capacity issue, but also how can we just choose an event and not all events if we're going to continue to be able to provide services to our residents in an efficient and effective manner? You're also going to hear from her with regards to the land acquisition study and conversation that she and I had, and I had the other directors as well, is as we do that study, we also just not look at land acquisition, but land acquisition for what? And that could also address some of the questions with regards to soccer fields. I wasn't making your presentation, just wanted to, to get out there so you have an idea what she's going to be sharing. You can ask clarifying questions of her when we get to that point. So Sheila, thank you.
Erin, members of the board, I appreciate the opportunity to present on behalf of Parks and Recreation. and Recreation. Before I fully jump in, I want to share that I don't just stand here representing myself and my staff. I also represent feedback from the Parks and Advisory Board. They are engaged in this process in lieu with our master plan and just our community engagement in general. I want to begin by taking a look at, as the town grows, so does the demand and expectation on the department. I'd like to take a second to provide you a snapshot of our service levels. Last year, the department was not funded for the requested park maintenance position, positions. We have reduced our park maintenance standards in order to keep up with the growing demands on our park system. For example, we've already reduced our standard of weekly mowing to every 10 days for non-athletic areas. We just reduced frequency to every two weeks. Reducing this standard has allowed staff to respond more timely to the ever-growing number of work orders. For reference, in fiscal year '24, there were a total of 390 work orders issued. In the first half of fiscal year '25, more than 661 work orders were issued. In six months, 70% more work orders were issued over all of the previous year. We have reduced the average number of days a work order is open for more than three weeks to under a week. This response was completed with no change to our parks maintenance staff. Athletics has been, has seen substantial increase with a total participation of 1,466 this year. Total participation in fiscal year '19 was 672. You now have just as many playing soccer as you had total playing sports in fiscal year '19. Your total general programming participation in last year was 17,745, an increase of more than 35% over the previous year. That does not account your event participation. You are on track with very consistent participation as the previous year, not as great of an increase. Our staff takes great pride in offering quality experiences. We have nine user groups that engage in recurring rentals and saw a substantial increase in private use of our facilities. We are the home of four schools, home field for four schools and support five other leagues and tournament programs. While we aren't revenue-driven, it is worth noting that the revenue you take in for such facility uses helps you to cover the expenses related to providing services and maintaining the fields. The revenue value from private rental field use to date is 25,500, which has increased from last year's revenue value of 10,940. That is an increase of 133%. With all this in mind, our goal for the budget this year is to continue to implement the master plan and to prepare for the growth of our community and to expand our capacity to maintain our levels of services by managing the increased use of our park system, to right-size our services to our available resources, and to retain and seek partnership. We began working with the advisory board in September of the, on the fiscal year 2026 budget. I presented a master plan and department check-in to the board. In October, I held individual meetings with each advisory board member to ensure everyone's voice was heard regarding operating and capital budget interests. In November, I reported out a summary of the individual meetings, and the advisory board engaged in discussion, acknowledged this feedback was consistent with how they felt we should go moving forward, and then they shared their top priorities. I used this feedback as I worked with staff to prepare a proposed budget. The advisory board believes we offer a good variety and would like to focus on big impact first. They want to see actions be more effective by not overextending ourselves, which means we may need to let some things go or delay them. The advisory board voted to have their chair and vice chair present their priorities to the Board of Commissioners, which you heard at the May, at the March 3 meeting. They are speaking to establish appropriate staff levels to handle, in their words, the basics for our growing population and demand on the department. We started budget season with the task of, in an ideal world, what would our budget request look like? And then we engage with management to discuss the impacts of moving forward or not moving forward with these drive, with the driving increases. The process is ongoing as we have these conversations with the Board of Commissioners. We hear from the community and we continue to work with our town, with our town manager. Currently, we have identified an increase of just over 267,000 while identifying decreases of 98,000. As it stands now, the expected increases would be 169, about 169,000 for our operating We are not recommending any increases to any programs in the upcoming year as we focus on right-sizing our services. The majority of increases are standard based on expenses such as insurance, existing salary and benefits, and utilities. We expect an increase to grounds maintenance and landscaping to support the continued growing use of our park system, newly acquired land, acceptance of more greenway, and the opening of Little River Park Phase 1. We expect athletic leagues and athletic rentals to continue to grow and will require staff to support those areas. Staff inspects our parks and playgrounds monthly. Due to the growing use and aging of equipment, we want to bring in a vendor that specializes in playground inspections to offer another level of assessment on a quarterly basis. I will talk more about staffing after I speak on reductions. I'm providing a list of areas we propose line item reductions. Some are standard lines that as new departments and services are brought onboard, we can reduce or transfer those amounts. Due to a delay in bringing on new programming staff and other priority initiatives, we were not able to successfully implement an after-school program this fiscal year. We are proposing we delay this effort while we work to right-size our services and further evaluate need. Our travel and training will be reduced as the increased reflection reflects a one-time expense that I received funding from the North Carolina Parks and Recreation Association to pay for me to attend a conference. Cultural and recreation programs has been reduced and will, will delay the expansion of our rec-on-the-go programming. Cultural, or not cultural, community center programs will see a reduction in adult art programs and non-league sport clinics. In athletics, we will delay the purchase of soccer goals and replacement of ZES scoreboards. We recommend reducing funding for the Sustainability Committee to be consistent with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. When the committee is ready to engage in programmings, we can, programming, we can review existing sustainability-relevant programs across departments and determine how it all fits together. The biggest budget and service impact will be special events. As our town grows, our staff does not have the capacity to continue to support the number of events that we did in the calendar year of 2024. The biggest challenge across the organization and not just Parks and Recreation is supporting two holiday events back-to-back. These are incredibly large undertakings, and we simply do not have the capacity to support them. It is our intent to focus on two flagship events, one spring and one winter. We can do Spring Fest in Candy Cane Lane, we can do a Spring Parade in Candy Cane Lane, or we could do Spring Fest and the Christmas Parade. And due to the substantial growth in our community, our population and traffic, the logistical support of the parade and the load-in will have to change substantially as Community Park in Arrendal Avenue cannot support it. We also propose proceeding with Rock the Block this year. However, we should engage with the Main Street Board to assess the impact of this event on downtown and determine if and how we can collaborate on this event moving forward. In an ideal world, our organizational chart in fiscal year 2026 would look like this. We would move athletics to the Recreation Division with the addition of an athletics supervisor to help support the current athletics participation, which is not manageable with the existing staff resources. Hiring an athletics supervisor will offer us an opportunity to bring in someone who has a few years of experience in athletics to help us navigating a constantly growing and challenging athletic program. We would also add two maintenance technicians to address our park maintenance needs as previously As we navigate budget development, our request to the manager has evolved. In March, I announced to our advisory board that for two weeks, I was fully staffed for the first time this fiscal year. I followed that by announcing the resignation of our Recreation Assistant. Instead of reposting the vacancy, I recognize that the greatest service need to our community right now is support in athletics. I also recognize that the town will have to make tough funding decisions across the organization. I began working with my staff to discuss what it would look like to repurpose the Recreation Assistant to the athletics supervisor position. The increased annual cost would be about 15,000-plus benefits. However, you are funding only one position and not two. This will create an increased administrative burden across all employees and limit some of our marketing and outreach efforts, but we agree that overall, this change will positively impact our citizens the most. We propose a maintenance technician be added in the spring of 2026. We hope to fill part-time vacancies and lean heavily on these positions to meet the growing athletic demand and weekend park support. Delaying additional staff will also continue to impact the overtime work by our Parks Maintenance Supervisor and two maintenance technicians.
I'm sorry, could I just ask one question from the last side? So the revised request is to still have the Recreation Assistant under the Recreation Manager?
So currently, there's, yeah, there's a Recreation Assistant that works directly underneath my supervision that supports the entire department and would heavily support the Parks Manager in athletics. There is a Recreation Assistant that currently works at the Community Center. That position will remain. Chloe, who formerly worked for our department, she had an incredible opportunity that she sought, and so I'm recommending that we repurpose that position at this time to an athletics supervisor.
Okay.
So that we can best meet our needs and not have to take on an additional position at this time.
Are we still doing Maintenance Tech 1 and Tech 2 from the last slide?
Yeah, so the difference in the two slides here, and I'm sorry, I didn't address that. So this slide recognizes that we would have two Maintenance Tech 2s and two Maintenance Tech 1s working underneath the Parks Maintenance Supervisor. We are, we've talked with management about reducing that to one Maintenance Tech, and that would come onboard in the spring. So it, it wouldn't quite give us the two Maintenance Tech 2 and two Maintenance Tech 1s to give us that nice structure. So in the meantime, it would look like this.
Okay.
And we would lean on our part-time maintenance as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
The advisory board's feedback on CIP projects recognizes the need to ensure the facilities are available for our future residents and that we are continuing to invest in our, our current park system. After discussing the projects they prioritized, the advisory board was asked to pick which were most important. You heard from them in March where they expressed their priority is land acquisition. Their next top priority is focusing on enhancing our existing park system by maximizing them and identifying low-hanging fruit or easy wins. An overview of our requested CIP will find a total of just over $2 million. The majority of the revenue for this expense will come from the Recreation Impact Fee with 490,000 requested from the General Fund. Projects proposed for consideration include land acquisition. I believe it speaks for itself, we've talked a lot about that, but the reality is you cannot do most of the needed out-year projects without acquiring land. We also want to engage in a site-specific plan for community park where we can engage the community and consider renovation opportunities to better meet the growing needs of our community. As it pertains to Little River Park, we're gonna need additional funds based on our 90% designs and construction estimates to complete Phase 1. We are getting ready, we're ready to move forward. We have submitted for permits, but we will need to acquire some additional funds. And both this project and the land acquisition project, you will be able to lean on Recreation Impact Fees to help fund those efforts. We also want to begin designs for a stream restoration project at Little River Park. This is an effort that was originally in the third phase, but due to intensified erosion, we would like to go ahead and begin designs for making those repairs to the, the stream bank. And if we're able to go ahead and do that, we'll be more competitive for seeking grant funding to help us actually achieve the repairs, and so we would like to be able to move forward with that. At Zebulon Elementary School, we would like to do some substantial renovations to the volleyball court there. And as it pertains to plan development and grant support, it's gonna be incredibly important that we seek third-party assistance to find external funding sources, that we cannot be successful in implementing our master plan and doing all of the projects that you see in the out-years. You're not gonna be able to do that based off of General Fund and the Recreation Impact Fee. There's gonna have to be external sources. You're gonna have to work towards a bond for Parks and Recreation. You're gonna have to get very creative, look for public-private partnerships in order for all of these projects to move forward. So I would say your most substantial needs to meet your growth recreational needs would be the multipurpose recreation facility, sports complex, a sports complex, your neighborhood parks, and then greenway development. I want to speak specifically on soccer fields. As you heard earlier, our youth program has grown exponentially. This has rapidly changed the availability and flexibility of our fields. We currently have three programmable soccer fields. One of those soccer fields has been incredibly challenging over the last year and has required us to change how we schedule our own programs on this field. The field stays very wet during the spring and fall time. It creates unsafe playing conditions and will cause severe damage to the field. We must carefully manage our three fields in order to ensure that our youth soccer program can be successfully held. We cannot afford to lose a field as we have no backup soccer fields. You will see us use non-traditional spaces for younger age groups that have less wear on open spaces that are not established fields. In addition to the increase in our own programming, we support private use of our fields. This year to date, we have supported 90 soccer and multipurpose rental occurrences, 84 football and six adult soccer. We have had to utilize non-traditional spaces to support these programs as well. In addition to this use, our soccer fields are available for use by the general public. The only time a field would not be available is if there is a rental, a program, or turf management issue. We lack access to soccer fields, we lack irrigation, and we lack lights. We expect our use of Town Hall campus to be impacted by the construction of the fire station this fall. We anticipate playing a minimum of six to eight teams at a time, and our parking arrangement will become more limited. It is possible we will have to play our youngest soccer players on the front lawn in order to meet our parking needs. If we want to continue to support our growing youth soccer program and support private field rentals, we must prioritize land acquisition. We are working on a policy that will engage the community regarding how we can best move forward to meet recreational needs and the land required to do so. We should be working to acquire neighborhood parks that can support single fields, but just as important, we should seek land that will support a sports complex. If we do not move on this issue, our ability to grow programs and meet private use interest will only continue to get smaller. Thank you, and I'm available to answer questions.
Comments from the board? Thank you.
Chief Grossman to present. He will present the budget, followed by interim deputy chief, who will also present on the cameras. So, chief.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. Thanks for having us here tonight to speak a little bit on our requested budget coming up this year. Okay, we'd start off with a little bit of our Okay, we'd start off with a little bit of our success in our FY25 so far. We implemented our peer support program. That's a program in-house with us that's staffed by some of our employees and volunteers that helps the wellness of our officers. We launched the care unit, which you've heard a little bit about that last month, and we'll speak again tonight about that. We entered into a partnership with care psychology for our officer wellness. This also allowed us to, Chief Oaken before she left, had come to you guys and asked the permission to enter in a grant for the ABC Commission. We were fortunate, we did get $7,500 this year to start the program because we didn't have any funding budgeted in FY25 for that. So that was great to get that started, and it is being used. I see the invoices every month from that for services being provided to the staff. So that has worked out great, and we will be asking for that to be funded in the upcoming budget. We did increase our safety with additional town in the LPR cameras in town, and you'll hear about some of those later tonight from Captain Collette. We transitioned all of our personnel to new weapons, handguns with new optics on our firearms, which have tremendously increased firearm scores and accuracy. Our overarching goals for this upcoming budget is the prevention and deterrence of crime, mitigate traffic concerns, building community partnerships, adherence to best practice in law enforcement and profession, and that also the update on that, we are looking, our accreditation that we've been working on strongly over the last two years should be granted to us at the end of the year. So that's going to be a big goal for the end of '25, just on that. Commitment to employee wellness and satisfaction, that's just everything, you know, keeping the employees happy and working well in good environments. So our priorities, what we're looking at for this next upcoming budget. Improve service delivery to underserved populations. So this is parts where, you know, the calls for service are going up in areas as our geographic expands, our whole miles and different things are moving out. We want to reduce fatigue by increasing minimum staffing for officers. When we move towards, we're asking for a request coming up here, you'll see for personnel, our goal in that is to increase our minimum staffing on shifts. Some shifts now that we have that operate on minimum staffing is two officers or three officers. We want all shifts to operate on three officers, no less. And then we sustain productivity approach to security and safety of the community. So that's going to be a big goal for the end of '25, just on that. Commitment to employee wellness. It's working. The upcoming budget asking for two police officers and a full-time social worker. This being our chart right now of our organization, the green slots are where we will fill in, as you see over to the right, the patrol area. Those two spots in the green there will allow us to have each squad with four people operating at a time on each squad. So then if one person calls in sick, training, anything like that is off, we will still have a mandatory of three officers on shift. And then, of course, we'll get into the full-time social worker that we're asking for. I think, you know, Captain Collette spoke about that the other night when he did a little presentation on the care unit, but we'll get to that. So, we're looking at that, we look at a couple different things, just on our calls, and I like Matt's number, he's talking about how much we will grow here if nothing else is even built over the next year. So the green line represents calls for service, shown in thousands. From 2015 to 2020, we averaged around 8,000 calls for service annually. In 2023, we recorded over twenty-seven calls, 27,000 calls, a combination of emergency 911 calls and self-initiated officer activity. Since 2022, calls have increased by roughly 3,000 per year and projected to show well over exceed 30,000 calls for service in 2025. The red line shows average daily activity. In just five years, daily workload has grown by 310%, placing significant strain on staffing and operations. These numbers speak to the need of more patrolling staff. And then here we are into the care unit, which you heard a little bit last month, but I'll go over some things here on their metrics. Last year, the board approved the grant that allowed us to launch the care unit. Its impact was quickly realized practically in how it supports young youth and reduces repeat calls of service. We look at the data from residences, residents, and we're responding to more than two times and that were referred to the care unit. Even though we are only looking at six months of care interaction, the data is staggering. There were sixteen residents with multiple referrals totaling forty-three calls, six accepted care services, so eighty-three percent of those who accepted care had no repeat calls. Hundred percent of those who declined services from the care unit had repeat calls of making Police staffing additions. So what we're looking at with these two officers, the main goal is alleviate strain caused by increased call volume. We're gonna addressing ongoing minimum staffing levels on the patrol shifts, which I just addressed with moving it to three people for minimum staffing on each shift. And support proactive policing and rapid population growth. That last one is what we carry on with the same as Chief Boykin started when she was here about our 50-50 approach with, you know, enforcing criminal law and then our community policing and with being short-staffed, you know, officers and stuff, we want them to have the availability while they're working where they need to be out talking to people, checking in on different things, and, you know, stopping at the ball field, but when they have increased calls and minimum staffing, you know, they're out taking calls for service. The full-time social worker, we're gonna find with this, we want to reduction in call volume, potential to reduce future criminality, making Zebulon safer, and building trust We're looking at a couple different parts of funding. I was mentioning, you know, in earlier meetings and things that we'd like us all to come and try whatever kind of grants we can get for funding. We did have a very successful three years of the governor's highway safety grant, funding those positions, as this is our third year, so, you know, we pick up the full costs next year coming with those. Coming up with the victim of the crimes grant, 125,000. This grant has already been applied for, and this is going for the social worker, which would do funding for three years of a full-time social worker if it is granted. It's already been submitted, we're just waiting for approval hopefully. The earmark grant, the $250, sorry, $250,000, that is for two vehicles and the emergency equipment that will go with the two positions that we're asking for. We have declined this year, move until next year, we're not doing any of our fleet replacement of vehicles that have aged out or anything, so we're not gonna have any capital money in replacement of other vehicles. So here with our CIP request, the two vehicles, and that'll be the purchase of two vehicles and fully fitted with the emergency equipment that they have, which is the $250,000, and then we're not any fleet replacement. So we look at the overall from last year to the coming up year, the FY25 adopted operating budget figures, and then we'll have what we were requesting right now in the operating budget. And then down at the below is our CIP, what 2025 was, and then what the request is for the 2026 CIP. That is just vehicles there, we're not doing any project, asking for any new equipment besides those two cars, but it is above the 250,000 because we do have current lease vehicle payments through enterprise that, of course, have to be continued in there in CIP. Any questions for me?
Questions, comments from the board?
All right. I'll ask, Commissioner Miles had contacted me and wanted a little overview of, had some citizens and stuff contacting him with the automated license plate readers in town, the flock cameras that we've had. This program started back in 2022, so I'd ask Captain Collette, he put together a little presentation on that, he's gonna go over that for you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and board of commissioners. I come before you tonight at your request to discuss the automated license plate readers within our city limits. In that request that we received, there were four specific questions, which will guide the presentation that you'll see tonight. And additionally, I'll open the question, I'm open to questions at any point during the presentation. So the first was how does the Zebulon Police Department use automated license plate readers in daily operations? We use them as a force multiplier mainly because the police can't be everywhere at once, and we use them to aid in identifying investigative leads. So we use citizens' cameras, we use cameras from businesses quite often for the same purposes, to identify vehicles, which are what the flock cameras that we utilize do. These cameras are, the flock cameras that we have are available specifically for our officers to use, law enforcement officers to use, to generate these investigative leads. So what they do is they can receive real-time alerts for Amber Alerts, stolen vehicles, NCIC entries, so things like if a wanted person was associated with the vehicle and the vehicle passed by one of the flock cameras, then it could provide a real-time alert for that vehicle passing by. And they also can access thirty days of historical data for investigative leads purposes. And what the cameras do is they enhance our ability in solving crime, and they serve as a crime deterrent, because quite often you'll see, once our criminals realize where the cameras are, they'll try to avoid those cameras. Hence the reason why we are asking for two additional cameras, as they are expensive, and we understand that. We're trying to be efficient in where we place those, so we can be the most effective with where they are placed. So the second question was who has access to the footage and data? So access is restricted strictly to sworn officers, sworn law enforcement officers. But that data is shared across a network of national, a national network that allows reciprocal access to license plate data across agencies. So for instance, Knightdale has access to our cameras, and additionally, hundreds of agencies within North Carolina and across the US also have access to the data. And they can use them for the same reasons that we can, criminal justice reasons. So no individual personal data is collected or accessible in the flock system, and the data is deleted every thirty days. So what that means is it captures a license plate, a vehicle type, make, and the AI within the flock system will say it believes this to be, for instance, a Toyota with the North Carolina license plate. And it can do that in day and night. What it does not offer is who owns that vehicle or any personal information about that vehicle. You have to have access to other criminal justice information systems to retrieve that, which adds another layer of accountability for use of the systems. The third question we were posed with was what is the nature of our partnership with neighborhoods regarding the flock camera placement and access? So with flock cameras, a neighborhood such as the HOA in a neighborhood can place cameras wherever they decide to place them. Generally, they're at ingress and egress locations to these neighborhoods. So they purchase them independently of the police department, they place them independently of the police department, and then they provide us access to those cameras for investigative purposes. They can revoke access to those cameras just as easily as they can grant them as well. So if, for instance, there is a community in Zebulon that has, there's one community that has these cameras at ingress and egress locations, they do currently grant us access to those cameras, and they've been very beneficial in solving crimes that occur in their neighborhood. So what are the policies and procedures in place to ensure proper oversight and responsible use? First and foremost, we have written policy governing the use of our ALPR systems, and those policies are, govern the general guidelines for use, including access to the system, retention of data, and training requirements. So before any officer can utilize the system, they're required to go through a hands-on training with the system that also overviews our policy to ensure they understand that this is only to be used for criminal justice purposes. And the data is treated like any other criminal justice system and is used only when there's a valid criminal justice reason for use. So we have other systems like CJ Leads, which is a state system that has criminal justice information involved in it. We have to have a legitimate criminal justice purpose. So generally, that is a case where we are looking for a specific suspect or vehicle. It could be that another agency has stated we're looking for a vehicle that committed a crime in their, and it could be Knightdale. Knightdale may have a crime that occurs in their jurisdiction, our officers could say, well, let's see if that vehicle has crossed into our jurisdiction to assist them in investigative purposes. And it's just two examples of use for that. And then all of our user activity is audited annually and subject to spot audits as well. So how have the cameras been helpful to our agency? They have been used to solve twenty-three serious crimes and provided numerous investigative leads. The twenty-three serious crimes are crimes inside Zebulon. Those cameras have been utilized by other agencies to solve crimes in their jurisdictions and provide investigative leads for numerous, numerous, numerous crimes. The crimes that we are looking at, that we've solved here, are not light in nature. We've solved, we solved the sex offense the first day that we had them. We've utilized them to solve a bank robbery, an assault, well, multiple assaults, a home invasion, burglaries, identity theft, armed robberies, strong-arm robberies, stolen vehicles, motor vehicle B&amp;Es, shooting into occupied dwellings, larcenies, warrant service, and we've also used them to locate missing persons. They have been very, very, very helpful to our agency in solving crimes. These crimes that you see, not all of them, but the majority of them may not have been solved without the placement of our flock cameras. And had we not, had we been able to solve them by other means, the time that it would have taken to solve those crimes would have been much more than what they would have been without them. So I'll open the floor to you guys for questions.
Comments from the board? Commissioner Baxter?
So what's the cost on the two flock cameras?
Now, they're around 3,000 apiece annually.
How many, how many do cameras do we currently have?
Cameras in total.
Cameras.
Yes, sir.
So it seems like there's more across town. What I'm getting, some citizens saying there's more across town. I don't know the placement, I think we have Gannon, two come across the bridge, and different locations, more than six of them, so it's total of six. Anything else that we see is someone else is purchasing, giving access, is that what I'm to understand?
Yeah, yes, sir, that's correct. And the way we place them is we're trying to get, the same way that a, that a neighborhood would place them, they place them in ingress and egress, if we could, if we could circle the city, then if you come in, we will get you, on one of those cameras, if you leave, we will get you. A lot of the crime that happens inside of Zebulon is not from the citizens of Zebulon, it's from people that come here from other jurisdictions into our jurisdiction.
We have six that are owned. How many total do we have access to? Do we know that, have that number?
City limits would be eight, we, eight or nine, we respond, I believe it has three. But we have access to thousands and thousands.
I'm saying locally, I'm saying locally.
Yeah, just here, yeah.
Correct, locally.
I believe it's eight or nine total.
And one question I get asked quite a bit, what does access look like? You said access, can somebody access it from the cellphone? Can they have to be on duty? What cuts off, what I get quite often is this, okay, when that police officer goes home, what cuts off the access to he or she having access to those cameras at any time? I was given an example like this, officer rolls over in the bed, pick up his cellphone, can he look at access to those cameras 24/7? Or what does that look like?
Traditionally, no. Some officers will have access to that, our detectives, because our detectives are quite frequently contacted. frequently contacted when they are not working on their shift. And you'll see your officers reach out to them with questions like, hey, I've got, we had this happen, I've got this vehicle, can you run it for me? And they will, they will utilize that system in that manner. Typically, the way that the access would be is the, the on-duty officer would have the software up on their computer and it would be live. Because it's, if it's not up live, then they don't get those live alerts for whatever may come in, be coming across these cameras for like a missing person or a wanted person or stolen vehicle. So they have that up live. Now, to, like I said, to ensure that there's no unauthorized access to the system, we conduct audits the same way that we do with our other systems like DCI, CJ Leads, all of those systems.
So pretty much everybody can access them from a cell phone, Diane, too? I understand that, correct?
So Flock does have an app for, for utilization, but any, any utilizations will be logged. So like, for instance, in May, we had about 200, 200 accesses into the system for the entire, entire time of, of May, or from April to May. And in those, just a quick audit, you can see that what each case number was, what each vehicle was ran for, there's always reasoning behind it. The same way that, I mean, an officer could go to his vehicle when he was off duty and engage his MDT system and run a, a vehicle through his DCI terminal, those, those accesses are logged. And through audits, we, we do those to ensure that there's accountability with that access.
And yeah, how you keep, you know, terminology, audit. What does an audit look like, just out of curiosity?
Yeah. So Flock keeps 30 days of information on, if, if I drive through Zebulon, it keeps 30 days of information. It keeps the, all of the historical data for users running that. So when you do an audit, you can pull 30 days, you can pull yearly, you can pull any, any timeframe that you want to look at there to see. And of course, we can't audit every single use for the entire year. It would be, it would be tons and tons and tons of uses. What we do is we'll take a 30-day increment from all the users, ensure that those are correct. Now, should we have any kind of complaint that there's been a misuse, or we have any suspicion of misuse, we would immediately go in and audit that individual user and other users. And we wouldn't just audit them for their access to Flock, we would audit them for their access to DCI, for CJ Leads, for all these other systems, to ensure that there's no bleed over into those as well. Does that answer your question?
It, it does.
Okay.
Do we have a partnership with the HOAs, where they kind of like, we have an agreement with those guys, you're going to allow us to use for a certain period of timeframe? What does that look like?
So Flock handles all of that for us. They are the ones that actually are requesting use through their, like their MOUs that we have are the same MOUs that we utilize with other agencies. So the understanding is, we have access, as long as they will provide us access, they own all that data. The Zebulon Police Department, the town of Zebulon doesn't own any of that data, that's Weaver Pond's data through their Flock systems. If they decided, we're no longer going to allow access into this system, they would reach out to Flock, Flock would terminate that access to us.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And while Chief Perry makes his way to the podium, you can hear a recurring theme of growth is here and it's going to happen, and how are we preparing for that? And you're going to hear the same thing here in terms of requests, whether it's capacity for staff or resources. But at the same time, prioritizing, prioritizing rather, our needs over, you know, our wants for your consideration. So Chief Perry.
Thank you. So the one you've been looking for, the last one tonight of these series of presentations. So tonight, I'll talk to you about the fire department's FY20 request. And kind of gearing up that, we'll, we'll talk just a little bit about FY24, 25 in review, just to give you a little, we've got a slide missing, but we can, we can cover it in between in the, in the meantime. So our department running about 2,200 incidents, a little better than that. If you were to look at fire stations across Wake County, you would see that we're in probably the top 10% busiest fire stations in the county. And that comes from the fact that we still run out of one station where most jurisdictions spread that call volume over multiple stations. That's not by accident, and I'm going to talk about that here in just a little bit more. Also, during this year, we had seven new positions that were fielded, three certified positions, you may recall, three recruit firefighter positions that were funded in cooperation with Wake County through ARPA funds and an administrative assistance. So we've been busy getting all of those people up and running. We ordered a, designed and ordered a replacement fire apparatus, which is the good news. The bad news is that we won't see that truck until 2028. If y'all remember, we ordered that truck and sometime far in the future, because 2028 seems like a long ways away, we'll see that truck. But nevertheless, the, the, we're in the line, I guess you could say. The Fire EMS Station project has helped, taken an immense amount of time. If you'd have asked me a year ago, how, how long will it take us to get this fire station designed and ready for construction, I would have been way, way off. Because we have spent so much staff time, and not just fire department staff time, Public Works staff, staff time, IT staff time, Wake County Project Management staff time. But we are committed to designing and building a pro, a facility that is very much something we can be proud of. And we, we implemented a new records management system, and normally I wouldn't talk about records management systems in, in a context of accomplishments in a year. But everything we do is data-driven. Everything we do is data-driven. And that gets to exactly what I'm getting ready to talk about. How quick do we get to calls? How many people are on that call? How long does it take those people to get there? Because that is, that is essential in determining how we develop our service delivery. So the, the slide in front of you has a lot of words on it, but I want to kind of center on just a couple. These are goals that you've heard probably over and over during your term as, as commissioners. Couple I want to highlight. Our goal is to arrive on scene within five minutes, 30 seconds of dispatch, 90% of the time. That has two components, how fast we get in route and how long we travel. That travel time, you hear me talk about travel time all the time. Four minutes from, to the time we roll down that ramp at the fire station until we pull up in somebody's front yard, 90% of the time. Where did that come from? For those who have not heard that, that is, that four minutes is not just an arbitrary number, it's based on positive outcomes from cardiac arrest and from stopping fires in the room and content stages. We want to stop fires before they get outside of the room of origin. And to do that, we've got to get there very, very timely. Once that fire reaches a stage of flashover, then it is very difficult to control. So we want to get there before that happens. That has not only property conservation, but life safety aspects of it as well. So that's where that four minutes come from. And then the second one, I want to kind of drill into just a little bit, because again, you've heard this one before, but this idea of having 13 persons on scene within 12 minutes. So this, the, the first one is about getting there, getting a crew to be able to initiate, initiate the response. The second part is assume, is assembling all the necessary people to effectively extinguish the fire or handle the cardiac arrest or what have you. So the one I've got outlined for you tonight is that, that structure fire that occurs within the corporate limits, that's where that 12, 12, 13 people within 12 minutes comes from, and that's based on critical tasking. What are the tasks that have to be done on every fire? How many people does it take to do that? So if you can recall, these numbers and the data related to them drives the questions that I get. Probably, you may get the same questions. People ask me all the time, our area is growing so fast, don't we need more fire stations? Don't we need more of this? You know, how is it? These are the, the data points that we use to measure that. Is these travel time goals and our compliance with that, our arrival goals and our effective response force goals? We measure how we're doing on that, and when we start to see areas of non-compliance, or in the case of these, our goal is to accomplish them in 90% of the time. If we're accomplishing them, it's 60%, and then it's 50%, we're seeing things we need to adjust, and that's exactly what we've done historically. So how does that relate to, to, to what you may hear and what I may hear? Population, you know, so many more people in our community now. You know, more people equals more calls for service, means more time on scene, means we're less available for more calls. So what do we do about that? We increase our staffing. And I say that in a very positive, we, we have been, we have been, through your support, very proactive in our additional staffing. We put one person on each shift during this current fiscal year, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about it as we add a second person to each shift during this upcoming fiscal year. So that's, that brings us to a fully staffed crews, a two fully staffed crews. The average daily trips, which is the, is the, is the data mark for traffic, counting traffic. More traffic equals more motor vehicle accidents, more calls for service, again, less, less availability. We've mentioned it before, fire only goes to a small portion of the motor vehicle accidents. When, when you look at law enforcement count, it's a way higher number. So they're, they're going to so many more motor vehicle, we're only going to those more serious accidents where there's personal injury, fluid leaking, hazards involved. But regardless of whether you're looking from either one, it's, it's obviously a lot more wrecks. Same things apply. More wrecks needs more people. And then that municipal growth, that's where the travel time begins to, to increase. So we've got this, this core area of the town, and now we begin to grow outside of that. Takes longer to get to those calls. Obviously, we can't get to the, to the further reaches of, of the northernmost areas or the, or the southernmost areas like we can these homes right here in our immediate vicinity. When we have those longer travel times, the likelihood of, of survivability from cardiac arrest, or the likelihood that that fire spreads beyond that room of origin increases dramatically. So what we do is we, again, we monitor that, and we watch these travel times. And when these travel times start getting better, excuse me, start declining, and we see travel times greater than at four minutes, especially when it's consistently. Because there are times, and that's why all of these are written at the 90% level, there are times when different things happen, and we're responding from another call, and it's the other side of town, or, or our crews, or whatever. Situations cause delays, but when we're consistently arriving in a particular neighborhood at six and seven minutes, those are the flags that start popping up that we've got to look at fire station coverage. So we took the, some of those service drivers, I did try to get the, the scale on these so they were, would stay all in, in, in similar range for, for graphical purposes. But to kind of point out a couple of them for you, when we look at incidents, we're running 149% more incidents than we did just 10 years ago. Which is in itself, you know, it would be, in, in the fire service, it's very typical to see an increase of about 5%, 5 to 8% is, is very, in, in a growing community. Obviously, that's a whole lot more than 5 to 10% growth each year. Some that kind of relate to what I was just telling you about, 254% more motor vehicle accidents than we saw 10 years ago. Motor vehicle, we're lucky when it comes to motor vehicle accidents here within the corporate limits because law enforcement is able to respond. But you can imagine if, when our crews go to motor vehicle accidents on US 64, Interstate 87, whatever you want to call it, 264, and we have to wait for the highway patrol, we may sit out there in direct traffic for an hour, hour and a half, waiting for highway patrol to respond to those motor vehicle accidents. That's, that is time when that fire truck is not available for any other calls. And that is, that is a problem. That is, that's a problem for all of us. So that brings me to my last bullet, 515 simultaneous calls in 2024. I've been here long enough, when I remember, when the fire department didn't run 515 calls in a year. But now, in 2024, 515 times, we were on a call when another call came out. So we have to have the ability to respond to multiple calls. When we can't respond to that call, somebody from Hopkins, somebody from Wendell, somebody from Corinth holders, what, whoever is near has to respond. And you're, if you can imagine, the travel times then don't go into single digits, they're, they're double digits. So that gives you an idea of, of some of the impacts of what does traffic and what does growth, what, what does it mean for the fire department? So let's look at the budget for FY26 and, and see what's in there. And this is just an overview, and we'll talk a little bit about the personnel, we'll talk about some line item increases and all this, I'll go into a little bit more in depth, and then we'll, we'll finish up with the capital items today. So this is a graphic I used last year, and I kind of liked it because these little, these little clip art people just, I, I can, I can understand this, I hope everybody else can too. But this is where we're at today, with our engine company staff with four people and our ladder company staff with three. But through those Wake County ARPA-funded, if you will, a federal grant-funded position, we've got one person for each shift in the training academy. They've been in training since October, we're ready to see them get on fire trucks, but they'll finish up about the time that this fiscal year finishes up. But as we move, and again, you have to multiply this times three if you want to get a, because this is each shift. But as we move to FY26, we're going to take that, that additional person, we're going to put them on the ladder. So now both companies will be staffed at four. That, that four is a key number for us, because a lot of our ASHA regulations, and you may have heard this phrase before, require two in, two out, in, in whatever activities we do. And it's hard to do two in and two out when there's three people on the truck. But nevertheless, we do the best we can. These two trucks, if you, if you recall, we started with a single company, we began to build it, then we split them, and now in FY26, we'll have two fully staffed crews, which is, which is exactly what the goal we were trying to achieve. So we're doing this with no additional positions. So we're not asking you to, to fund any additional positions because you did that last year, you made that commitment last year. As I said, it does improve that, that two crew functionality, that idea of when there's, if I can put it, use my previous example, when that fire engine is sitting on 64 waiting for the highway patrolman to come, so they're directing traffic, we've still got a company in service available to answer calls. So that's a, that's a, that's what keeps us as effective as we are when it comes to those simultaneous calls. When it comes to those 13 people for that effective response force, now we're, we're, we've got eight people of those 13. Our reliance on our outside companies is not as much as it has been in the past. Historically, we have not met that 13 people in 12 minutes. This will definitely get us closer to doing that. It is important, in, in full disclosure, I want to be sure I point out, there is a budgetary impact to these three people, although there's no additional positions, they're currently being funded under Wake County, Wake County ARPA funds, and those funds will expire on June 30th. The good news to that is, I'll give you the bad news. The good news is, is through our county cost share, we're only responsible for 65% of those salaries. So Wake County will pay for 35% of the salaries associated with those, those three people. Line item increases, I'm, I'm proud to say they're fairly few in number, they're related to those personnel related to bringing those three people from the academy and actually getting them online. So there's some uniform increases, there's travel and training associated with those, those three employees. There's an increased building maintenance cost, just, you know, all the different costs that go along with operating a building, any building. We have seen some cost, again, this year, related to the EMS building, as it is still operating pretty much just like it was when it was an EMS facility. So we're, we've got some building issues there that will need to be addressed at some point. Vehicle and maintenance issues, the more you use vehicles, the more you use this equipment, the more you use it, it costs more as it breaks and needs repairing. Insurance and then increased dispatch calls, but if you took all those and added together, we're still less than $50,000 in increases, if you spread that among the, the entire group there. And then let's talk just a little bit about the capital items. So the Fire EMS Station construction, I'm very excited to know that hopefully within months, we'll be pushing dirt and, and seeing stuff happen related to that. In the next couple of months, we'll finalize what our obligation is at, but we've got a placeholder, placeholder in the budget for our cost, our part of a $5 million loan. This project is going to be somewhere in the 15, 16 million dollar range, so a $5 million loan on a, on a facility of that cost. But so there's, there's placeholders for that in the, in the budget. The Judge Street, Rendell Avenue stoplight construction, for, from my perspective, that's an integral part of the fire station, allowing traffic to get out on Rendell Avenue. Again, a placeholder for 1.9 million, that's a project that you'll hear more about from Public Works as they are working through that project. There's already been, as you, some of you may recall, some work and study work done on, is it, should it be, should it be roundabout? Should it be stoplight? What is exactly is needed? So there's a whole project. But that work, again, a placeholder related to that in, in the capital side. Defibrillator replacement, all of our defibrillators are on a three, on a five-year replacement. And we've got three that will age out this year, so we'll replace those. The good thing about defibrillators is that's a technology that, there's a few technologies that we use that are getting cheaper and cheaper, but thank goodness, defibrillators are beginning, let's just say they're getting more affordable. Let's not say cheaper, but more affordable. So used to, we would budget double this for this So used to, we would budget double this for this type of, of, this number of defibrillators, but they've gone down in recent years. And then our personal protective equipment, our turnout gear replacement, some of you may recall that we replace 10% of our gear each year, it has a 10-year service life. So instead of having huge replacement costs every 10 years, we just annualize that, so we replace some every year. The unfortunate thing is, it is the exact opposite of defibrillators, they go up every year. It's, some of you may recall that, we talk about coat and pants, helmets, boots, they all have a 10-year lifecycle, and they're $5,000-plus dollars to replace a coat, pant, boots, and helmet. I typically like to end these discussions with, with you each year by talking about our cost share. Our cost share is, is a formula based on our population between the county area we serve and the municipal area we serve, the property value of those two areas, the heated square footage, again, certain factors go into it, and when you put all those numbers in, they take the rolling three-year average. So for FY25, our rate will go from 35.76% to 34.48, which is down 1.28%, which is pretty typical. We have modeled in our future years, anywhere from 1% to 1.5% decline, just as, just knowing the town is going to grow over years, and as the, the town part gets a little heavier lift for us, the county gets a little lighter, that is intended to represent that in our cost share. And with that, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Comments from the board? Commissioner Baxter.
Yeah, when you talk about the, the cost share, and I understand how the, the ratio works, but our fire department staff is still going to be seeing an increased number of calls coming from the county as county projects build out as well. So even though our percentage is going down, in reality, we are receiving more calls.
Yes. So one of those factors, and I didn't give you all five factors, is call volume. So we look at how many calls occur within our corporate limits, and how many calls occur in the unincorporated areas, and you're right, those, their volume goes up. Unfortunately, what typically happens is our municipal call volume goes up higher than, but you're exactly right, it does track higher, so our overall call volume will go up. But that formula takes that into account, is the call volume. So for example, the best thing I can think of, pretty much every call other than, and between Bob and Captain Collette, they could help me, but this area from right in here where GSK is out about Shepherd School Road, wherever that part is into corporate limits, but all these other motor vehicle accidents that we go to, Little River area, and at the, beyond the split, and down towards Bun Lake, those are all counties, county calls, because they're out in the unincorporated areas.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Questions, comments from the board? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I think these are the presentations for tonight.
Next on the agenda, closed session is to allow per GS 143-318.11 for the purpose of personnel discussion, is there a motion to go into closed session?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Motion passes. Do we need a five-minute recess before we go into closed session? Thank you.